Six thirty, call me to order. Sir, find compliance with the open records law?
Yes.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Hayden.
Here.
Councilmember Hooker.
Here.
Councilmember Mayke.
Here.
Councilmember Raisler is absent. Camp, councilmember Weisenbeck.
Here.
Councilmember Weiss Apple.
Here.
Five percent.
And so I have the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just mentioning that councilmember Raisler did contact us. He had a family event tonight was is the reason why he's not here tonight. Would somebody like to make a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no. Let's adopt it. Next we have public comments. The floor is open for anybody who would like to speak to the council. Either on an item that's on the agenda or any other item, please just identify yourself for the record. There are no public comments. We'll move on to scheduled appearances, which we have none tonight. Next we have the consent agenda. The following manner may be acted upon by the city council utilizing a single vote. Individual items which any member wishes to address in greater detail or as a separate item on the regular agenda may be removed from the consent agenda upon the request of any council member. We have the minutes from the regular city council meeting from May tenth, twenty twenty-three. Temporary bartender's license for Catherine M. Asher, Diane M. Mack, Michael K. Norby, Jr., Amanda S. Smith, Kendra A. Berg, and Haley J. Mettendahl. For the Fun Fest, June twenty-nine, or June ninth through the eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
I would note, Mayor, Chief Raisler not here tonight, but he did address that in his report that he's fine.
Does someone like to make that motion?
Make the motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no. It is approved. Next, move on to the business agenda. Mayor's report, just a few things to talk about. I'd like to congratulate the fire department and all the staff and volunteers for pulling off a wonderful event this past weekend. It seems, it's a great crowd. It seems like things went well. And a nice event, not only for the funds that are raised, but I think of a great community event for the folks that can sit and visit and so on and run into old friends and that type of thing. So again, a great event put on by the fire department. Also, just a reminder, Memorial Day is coming up on Monday. The local services will be at ten thirty here in Memorial Park. Of course, the local American Legion will also be down. Gary, you're gonna do the thing right before the, when you get back to Duran from all the other cemeteries?
Right, it's ten o'clock at the memorial.
Ten o'clock down here at the memorial, and ten thirty in Memorial Park. So, anybody on the council if you would like to, we'd like to have some representation there, to please come on Monday morning for those Memorial Day services. As far as the spraying thing, you're talking about his report?
Matt's report, yes.
Okay, so I was gonna, okay. Okay, that's all I got. Any questions? Hearing none. Move on to administrative support. Administrator Rasmussen?
Well, short, quick items. First off, it's that time of year again. Grass is growing, weeds are growing. We're getting complaints about yards. So I just reminded everyone out there that again, it's our prerogatives that keep the yard mowed. And frankly, we're not going out and actively, you know, sighting people or putting notices on doors, things of that nature. Typically, we're just doing it based on if there's a complaint by a neighbor, we act on it immediately. And just as a reminder to council members and some of our new members, we have dispensed with doing any mailing because frankly, it just takes too long. So by the time, you know, we're three, four days to get there. So basically, we get a complaint similar to our ice and snow policy. There's just a basically a blaze orange door hanger that goes on your door that puts, if you've got twenty-four hours to get your yard mowed. And you know, basically, we'll give a couple, couple warnings on that. And if it gets to be three, four days after that, then Matt's crew steps in and does it for a price that nobody likes.
What is that price?
Well, we have, we have two, two pieces of it. One, we can site. And that's, that's over a hundred and fifty plus bucks. And then for the cost of somebody, I mean, it's the full cost of the employee and all their benefits. And so at minimum, it's, you know, it's, what is it, like sixty, sixty-five bucks now?
The hourly rate for the man is almost fifty, and hourly rate for machines, about thirty. So you're talking eighty dollars an hour.
So you're talking about two hundred dollars plus?
Yeah, you know, and it's, it's from the time they leave the shop to the time they get there, they mow, they trim, and they get back and they get cleaned up. So you're, you're usually an hour to two hours at minimum to get one lawn mowed.
And we don't, we don't do a lot of that. We don't have to do a lot of that fortunately. You know, we do get pretty good compliance. Once those stickers go on the doors, you know, and we tell them that, hey, this could be a two hundred dollar, you know, lawn mowing. So we get pretty good compliance. But, and even, and maybe back to the, you know, the no mow May type stuff, you know, our ordinance is our ordinance. But you know, if someone is really, you know, if they were to call and explain, we try to work through something. So. But again, it's tis the season. I mentioned last time at the last meeting, talking about the, some of the potential changes to shared revenue. You have noticed or may have heard that, well, they did pass the assembly since we had our last meeting. So that's good news for us. I can continue to think it's gonna be good news because it does seem to have real bipartisan support. Now, I know there's some hangups regarding some pieces with the city of Milwaukee and some things that they need or may not be allowed to do as part of this bill. But so basically, the estimates that came out of the last, the assembly session was that we would be looking at almost seventy thousand dollars in additional shared revenue, which would be really, really great for us. At this point, there do appear to be some, some strings attached. Frankly, I don't think the strings are too bad. You know, you must spend them on emergency services and/or public works. Almost eighty percent of we spend our money on is apparently eligible by vitamins. So again, I just don't see that the strings attached are really hindering at any point there. So again, I think that's good news for all of us. And that'd be a fifteen percent increase to our shared revenue. We have not seen an increase to shared revenue over point one percent in any given year since two thousand. So again, this is, this is a big deal. So I, again, I'm gonna continue to talk about it a little bit as we get to know more about them. I think it'll be good for everyone, including the cities, townships, county, you know, everyone across the board. And then finally, we don't have a report tonight for, for ambulance, but it is National EMS Week. So I would like to again, recognize our EMS staff and the hard work they do and, and their efforts, especially in the last several months of hitting, you know, just above a hundred percent of our calls. I did hear that we had, I think, we did both Saturday. We had five calls on Saturday. And we didn't, we didn't miss one of them because frankly, we just didn't have, you know, two of them were at the same time. We just had enough people. So, so again, kudos to those folks and the hard work that they do.
That's good. Was there any missed transfers or how'd that?
I, I don't, so kind of between reports, but when I met with the staff, and I'll, I'll talk about that just a little bit when we get into the agenda item related to ambulance. But I met with the staff members last week for the officer corps. They had at least one transfer, as I recall. But again, that's, that's still what we're striving towards. But, but again, it's difficult to have those essentially four people. So that continues to be our, our holdup. But hopefully that gets better.
Yeah.
And I'll say this in blue in the face. The nine-one-one calls are the most important thing. The transfers are a little bit grim in my term. I know my place right here, but.
Sounds good.
We'll keep plugging on.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Any other questions for the city administrator? Hearing none. We'll move on to public safety. The police department, the chief's not here tonight, but everybody has a report. Few of the things on there, talk about the bike rodeo they conducted with the second and third grade classes at Catty Woodland. That he worked, him and Officer Bonnerup, and intern Joseline Cruthers. And then also with Pepin County Deputy Machie and Shu also assisted with the event. And he also mentioned, of course, in the report about Sergeant, Sergeant Schillhorn doing a great job activating, activating for sexual assault victims, so on. And then the, that they will be having a joint emergency vehicle operations control training with the Pepin County Sheriff's Department and the Pepin Police Department on May thirty. So anyway, so that's what he had. Any questions on the police department? Hearing none. Move on to the fire department. Do we have anything? See, the chief's not here. Matt, you're an officer. Do you want to give a quick sort of the, your event?
Well, we had a, we had an excellent turnout for our event. Building was packed all day. Standing alone at night. We served nine hundred dinners.
Nine hundred, nine hundred.
Nine hundred and some chicken dinners we served throughout the day. We anticipate usually well over a thousand people through the building. We do get people that don't, that come to partake in the raffle and stuff that don't eat. So overall, it was a great day. We were outside on the patio. People thoroughly enjoyed the bands outside and sitting out in the sun throughout the day. I didn't get any personal complaints from anybody. It was nothing but positives. And we're still kind of finalizing some of the numbers. So I don't actually have a numbers report for you yet. Chief can probably have that in his month. But everything went well, without a hitch.
Okay. Thank you. Next we'll line the ambulance, monthly update.
Yeah, not much for an update other than, so we will have our co-directors, or at least one of them, at the next meeting for the first meeting in the month. That was what we talked about last week. But otherwise, we're making the nine-one-one calls and we still work on everything else. Again, I had a meeting with them the other day that kind of flows into the next, the next item. So we'll kind of look at that. That's all I have.
Any questions on the ambulance? Next, discussion possible action regarding changing the ambulance bylaws to reflect the new officer structure.
Okay, so it's a book page in front of you. And, and just a kind of a quick update on, on this. So basically, what our goal here was to just change the bylaws to immediately duress the changes that we recently made as a council. Choosing co-directors that were appointed, and then also a, an assistant, assistant director that was also appointed. And so I know this is kind of short and brief. Rest assured though, one of the, one of the things that both directors, co-directors talked about was going through the ambulance bylaws and updating some things that have been, you know, changes from the past and some things that they would like to, like to see changed. One other piece that is not reflected here is they're gonna do an internal discussion of the potentiality of adding a training officer, a specific training officer as well. But so basically, the changes that you see reflected here and where they show up is, you know, essentially the first page here under officers. Anything that's underlined or crossed out is, is a change to the bylaws. So there's just a couple. So to go through those, you know, clearly, the current service has the standard four officers. A director, a first assistant director, a second assistant director, and then a secretary treasurer position. Frankly, they have no need for a treasurer. So basically, that position is just called, is just changed to secretary, which is why you see treasurer crossed out. From the standpoint of what we did want to do is change the bylaws and then, okay, you know, if we get down the line, we just have one director again, and we have to go back and change the bylaws. So basically, we just wanted to update the bylaws to reflect the potential of, as it's written now, with co-directors. And then it would flow forward, even if we ever went back to a single director or changes in the, in officer corps in the future. So basically, the addition of the director and first assistant director are appointed positions. If two individuals are serving as co-directors, both those individuals and a, and a single assistant director will be appointed. So that covers basically what we, what we changed and reflecting the, the co-directorship of both Ms. Bigmell and Mr. Doughty. And then Ms. Poleser's role as the, the one assistant director. On the backside then, so again, we changed the, the second, just got rid of the treasurer and secretary. We're still gonna have a, a secretary. And then I just added a section, basically E, and again, we'll pretty that up a little bit there. When we go through the whole piece, say, under co-directors, in the event that two individuals are serving as co-directors, the co-directors will assume the duties of both the director and first assistant director. And then the single assistant director will assume the duties of the second assistant director. And then just a little farther down below, under election of officers. So they still wanted to have at least an elected secretary. And if there ever is the need of a second assistant director, that's why I had the if necessary, that that would also be an elected position. Which I, I didn't seem to have much of an issue with. So the top level will always be appointed. And at minimum, the next in line will also be in a pointed position. And then if there's the potential need for that second assistant plus the secretary, that would be an elected position. And that, and they, they had met with the group at the meeting earlier this month, and they were also in favor of that. So. So those are the, kind of the, the quick changes to the bylaws to reflect what the council acted on in this last meeting. And then we'll continue, and a couple of things we'll continue on again, updating the entire bylaws, continue to change. And then some of the, as, as the co-directors and the new assistant director work out their duties, those will change and get updated in here as well. So, so the duties as listed in here are pretty broad. But again, know that those will be coming back before you in the coming months with a little more need attached to them.
Sounds good.
So you're, so are you eliminating the treasurer, department, and all of this?
Yes. So because frankly, there's just, there just is no need for it. They don't have a separate. So basically, any month, you know, and I know this is, this has been a a topic that's been a lot of disgust with the ambulance crew as well. You know, in the past, we used to, you know, we used to get money. But again, you're not your own separate organization like the fire department has with its relief association. So any money that's raised on behalf of the Duran ambulance service is city of Duran money. Not unlike when, when Stan raises money for the police department. That's city of Duran money. It goes into our coffers and yes, it gets segregated for use. But at the end of the day, they don't have any separate accounts, any bank accounts or anything like that. So frankly, there's just no need for them in the treasury.
The reason I say is because down here in the meetings, there's a couple of.
Is there another, so we'll have, if there is something, I see, yeah, yeah, yeah. So under meetings. So we'll, we'll get those cleaned up too now.
All right.
You know, for future. Yeah. I see that now too. But they will maintain a secretary position that is still technically an officer's position. Because that's the, that's the main cross of this.
So a situation there is if any money is donated to the ambulance service, it goes into a city account. Now, it's for the ambulance.
Correct. It is segregated for them. But again, it just comes out of the, out of the city account.
Any other questions? And as we said, so basically tonight, we'll be looking at approving the changes that we have. It'll update it. And again, some of those other details as we work on, those other things will come, come before us in the future. But again, we will update the bylaws right now. So at least meets what decisions we made at the last meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the change in ambulance bylaws to reflect the new officer schedule.
Second.
We have a motion second. It's on the floor for any further discussion concerning changes to the bylaws for the ambulance. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no. Motion's agreed to. Public Works and Utilities Superintendent Ellis.
Yeah. There are a few things on my list here. First off, the letters for the Twelfth Avenue Reconstruction Project have been drafted and should be out this week to the two residences that we do have on that, on that dead end. So they should be receiving a letter just kind of detailing the project and start times and, and and times and some significant dates and goals and standoff under corner concrete and some stuff like that. So those should be mailed out this week. We just finalized the letter on Monday. The flags are up for Memorial Day. The cemetery, the parks are all ready, looking good for Memorial Day. Mark Chilson from the Legion dropped off some flags for us to put up down below. They take care of the flags. They pay for the flags down below. And then we'll install them for them. So we'll be putting those up here probably tomorrow or Friday morning. The only one he didn't have was the American flag, but he'll be getting one of them here in a couple of weeks. So those will be looking good. We have had a storm sewer issue up here on Third and Main Street at the intersection. You see a couple cones on the radius there. There is a storm sewer pipe underground there that has developed a hole. So there was a little sinkhole under the ground or under the asphalt. We packed it full of rock. And we're gonna get a crew in to do some televising that over the next couple of weeks. It's kind of a, a difficult one to get to because there's no manholes. It was the older way of installing things where they just kind of ran a pipe and then they tied, they tied the pipe from the storm grain. The pipe that comes out of the storm grain, they just tied it in without putting a structure in there for us to access. So we have to access it from the outfall, kind of down in the swamp and run camera up through there to kind of see what's going on. So a little bit different than some of the normal ones that we might. We might potentially have to dig this one since it isn't installed, kind of tapped into the pipe and there's no manhole. Kind of hard to sleeve and line nineties and forty-fives and things like that. So this might be a dig and, and replace. But we'll have, it's a little early in the game for me to have all that information here for you to tonight. So we'll, we'll work on that. The new permit for the wastewater treatment plant is in the review process. I got my first copy Monday. I'm reviewing that as we speak. I have until the sixth of June for any of my comments and concerns. And then it goes to public, public input for sixty days. So that is moving along. We seal coated Madison Street. That was supposed to be done in June. They called me, said they had an opening, asked if they could do it last week. I said, yes, go ahead. We tried a new seal coat. It's called GSP eighty-eight. It's, we don't use rock on that one. So we don't have the excess rock. We don't have to sweep. We don't have the problem with the rock peeling and winning in people's yards. And from what I'm being told, it's supposed to last at five to seven years, kind of the same as, as a P E. But we will try it out and see what happens. I've had a lot of compliments from the people that live up through there, not having the rock mess. And a lot of other people throughout telling too that drive it, say, it looks nice. So we'll see how long, how long that lasts.
The first thing I noticed was no rock.
No rock this year. Uh, last but not least, the pool. We started filling that. It is full. We turned the pumps on today and started the circulation system, started adding chlorine and acid, trying to get everything balanced out. Everything, knock on wood, is, is operating properly. The only issue we're having is the furnace. Some of the parts that got ordered are not correct. So we're working with the company to get the correct parts in here. Hopefully have those in by next Tuesday and the Wednesday so we can get some, some heat into that pool. So.
With a little chilly.
What's that?
I said that would be chilly.
A little chilly. Yeah, she's like sixty-eight, seventy degrees right now. So it's a little cold. Yeah.
What, what'd you end up doing with the patching? What stuff did you get?
We got some patch from Farrell, some, all right, grab a mine like here, from vertical high strength patch from, right from Farrell that we mixed up and, and patched as many of the cracks as we possibly could inside. So.
That seemed to help a lot.
So far, last, I, we, we finished filling it last night. And by, from three o'clock yesterday afternoon, when I read the meter after it was full till eight o'clock this morning, I was up there, we just went through nine thousand gallons of water. So. It's a lot better than it was last.
Yeah, we're, we're doing better.
That's an average of about six hundred gallons an hour. So patching some of those holes helped us out. But that patch, you know, and they'll even tell you it's not gonna last a year. The water gets behind it.
Just get us through the summer. What's, what's the status of lessons and?
Yep, that's on my, next on my list here is swimming lessons. So last Friday was the end date to get your information and your request in for swimming lessons. We did have a hundred and eighty requests for swimming lessons. We finalized about ninety-seven percent finalized the schedule today. So we have a full array of swimming lessons starting on June twelfth. We have from nine to ten, ten to eleven, we have levels one, two, three, and four. All are full with ten kids, except level four, that only has three or four on one of the sessions. We added a session from eleven to twelve this year for levels five and six. And we had enough, enough people to actually start a level three in that time range too. So from eleven to twelve, we have levels three, five, and six going on. There's actually two level fives. There's like seventeen kids in either level five. So we had to split that up into two classes. And then the evening sessions are four to five and five to six, and they are level one, two, three, and four. And they are all filled up as well. So everything's full with about, I shouldn't say everything. We do have, what, level four has a few time slots left in, in a couple of those hours. But other than that, the rest of the levels are full with roughly about a hundred and eighty kids. So.
Only two on the waiting list.
Yeah, only two on the waiting list.
We can't, we can't work that out this time. We'll work it out obviously next and later in July.
And then we will just come out with the second half of, we'll come out with July sign up here, probably go to the middle of June, just like May's sign up one. So everything is a little bit later and a little shorter term this year than what we would normally like. But we're just making sure that we can, the pool's even gonna be open and usable before we, we try to get everybody signed up and everybody paid and we don't have to refund. But it's, it's working out pretty, it's working out real well. Went to a Google Doc forum this year. I got more information. Worked out, worked out real well.
I'm just curious, at the different levels, what, what is involved? At the highest level, are you doing any life-saving stuff? No? I was required by my parents to go through class.
Yeah, so I'm not, I've, I've actually, I'm not a W S I certified instructor. So I've never sat through the class. So I, I couldn't sit here and tell you exactly what gets taught level one, exactly what gets taught level two, exactly what's taught level three. I never rely on the, on the instructors for that information.
And the other thing about, just about Matt, for you, he is the certified pool operator. So you have to have somebody who is certified to go through a class, pass the test and so on and so forth. And on how, how long that lasts?
Five-year license.
Yeah, a five-year license. So he is the certified pool operator.
Nice.
That's all I have for the pool. Um, we are opening June first at noon for open swim. And then June fifth will be the morning swim, starting at six, from six to eight. And then obviously lessons on the twelfth. So those are the three milestones that we need to hit.
And if anybody out there in the public has any questions prior to opening the actual call down City Hall, if they can tell them if it's about anything, about hours, about lessons or whatever.
And some of the hours did change a little bit this year. Like we are closing at six instead of seven. We changed a little bit of the open swim during lesson times because we moved a little bit of lesson times around. So open swim done at like three thirty instead of four like it used to be. So there's a, a few little times that we, that we tinkered with this year, but it shouldn't really affect anything. There are just times that we were always, in the past, closing by six, six-thirty because there wasn't hardly, there wasn't anybody in the pool anyway. So we dropped that time off up there. Part of that was also due to hours that, you know, we have to make sure that since our staff is, is under eighteen, there's so many hour, only so many hours, consecutive hours they can work without breaks and only so many hours they can put in in a, in a week. So trying to manage that stuff as well. So.
Just off the top of everybody's head, is there any CPR classes in Duran given anywhere for anything?
Uh, there is, I believe, a couple private sessions that get, I don't know when. That'd be a good question for the, for the ambulance doctors.
And that's something that they're looking at, at doing in the future for their own staff and that.
Yeah.
We go through one, City Hall every two years.
Yeah, we go through one every two years. We have our own private one here at City Hall for all of our employees.
Is there AED in the?
Yeah, trade room corner.
Cool. All right.
Yeah. And the other thing about the, because they've all, we've gone through the, because I took the course, or the professor course, whatever. Up at the, that's been a few years ago. But so we had, they have been offered in public before.
Good. Very good.
And any questions on the pool? We got one more item. And any questions on the pool? We got one more item.
Go, go ahead.
But any, any questions on anything so far? So last.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Elizabeth, go ahead.
The cost to, for the pool this summer, is that the same as last year?
Yes, nothing, nothing changes.
Nothing changes, yeah, yeah.
Last but not least, our friendly flying mosquito.
Oh, that's right, spring issue.
I knew you were gonna forget about that.
No, no, I said, I was gonna put it first.
So, yes, we, we have a mosquito problem. I think we can all, all agree that, that there is a problem. So first, I just want to kind of lay out how we spray, how much it costs and what we budgeted. And then I will let you guys decide if you want to go outside of those, those windows or not. So our mosquito, we have a fogger. We, we put Anvil two plus two in that fogger. That is a twenty-four hour contact kill only pesticide. So it will only kill what it comes in contact with and when twenty-four hours it is dissipated and, uh. So we spray that in the evening hours when mosquitoes are the most active. So roughly start at seven or eight o'clock at night and we'll spray till eleven or twelve. Usually, it's usually a three or four hour window that we're out there. Our machine holds ten gallons. We buy this stuff in two and a half gallon jugs for two hundred and seventy-eight dollars a jug. So it costs us one thousand one hundred and twelve dollars to fill up that machine. So, and that's one spray. So that's up from years past, obviously. I think last year I bought it at two forty a jug, now it's at two seventy-eight a jug.
But ten gallons does one sprays?
Ten, actually at one spray, I think we use like seven and a half or eight gallons. But it's pretty much like a, you know, a thousand gallons every time we go up there. So in our budget, we have four thousand dollars. We budget four sprays a year. In the process of that, but the thought process through that budget is that we would spray the week before Fun Fest. We'd spray before the June music in the park, the July music in the park, and Blues on, and Blues on the Chipmunks. So that's what we've budgeted. We've budgeted four sprays. So you can spray those four times whenever, whenever you guys want to spray those four times. But that's all we have is four sprays without taking money out of another part of our budget to do more than that. If you want to spray, if you want to spray tomorrow night, which we most definitely can spray tomorrow night, the, the machi, the machine is out and Ben went through and ready to go. So if you want to spray tomorrow night, that's one of your sprays, you'll end up taking that away from say a Blues or a, a July music in the park. So it's completely up to you guys. We can, we only have four budgeted. We can spray for the next four straight weeks if that's what you want to do. But that's all we have budgeted is those four sprays. And it will, like I said, it's a contact kill, it's gone in twenty-four hours. And about three days later, you're gonna get a new hatch. So then you're gonna be, maybe not the third day, but the fourth day and the fifth day, you're gonna be right back into that same boat you're in now. So that's gonna alleviate, one hundred percent alleviate the problem. So a true program sprays every three days, you know, to kill and, and then the new hatch and to kill and the new hatch and then to kill. Well, that's very expensive. We definitely can't afford to do that.
I just keep moving fast.
But the, the idea is that at least we can hopefully gets, gets, knock them down a little bit and try to, and hopefully be able to do that.
Yeah, that, that's the budget, so we can spray four times.
So where the conversation come up, I've been approached by some citizens and also some council members. Have been approached by Little League and so on and so forth because of the, and just because they're just that bad right now, would we consider up and do a spray right away to try to see if we can knock some of these mosquitoes down? So what I did was, it's not an agenda item, it's part of his report, but again, the program's in place. So basically a consensus of this group to say, should we do one here tomorrow night? You're, we're all set to do it on Thursday. It looks like the weather's gonna be pretty good. The other thing about it is we need it so it's calm, because we don't want it blowing away. It can't be raining, because it'll wash it away. So, but it seems like the weather, and that's sort of the question. And if the general feeling of the council is that we should do one, and again, it gets us toward the end of the summer. Either we're gonna have to, if we want to, if we have to do it again, or if we do it, we go ahead of schedule. We need a spray, we define it in the budget, or we decide what we're gonna do, or we don't spray. So that's where we're at.
And maybe put it a little differently. Because we, we don't want to do any kind of voting here, because again, it's not an agenda. So fair to say staff has decided that we're gonna do it tomorrow night.
Yeah.
So unless we hear some major conservatives from council, that, that is what our plan is. And we'll see how it goes and, and hopefully it does help. Because again, we, we know they're bad out there. And numerous, and even to the credit, Little League is doing a lot of their own spraying as well around the fields. And that's helping to a degree, but they're still, especially in that area. I mean, it's, until those, that standing water dries up, you know, it's gonna be, continue to be an issue. So hopefully, you know, that happens, it's been warmer and obviously we don't have any rain in the future. Hopefully that takes care and then as Matt noted, we, we hit those other schedules, you know, and as, as the bugs potentially get bad again. And, and we're, we're still on budget. And we'll keep you posted on that.
And we haven't always sprayed on that, if there's actually absolutely no some mosquitoes and it's dry out. We've skipped some sprays once in some summers, correct?
Yeah, we only sprayed twice last year.
We only sprayed twice last year.
Is it granular in that? Are you gonna put any of that on the parks for Memorial or?
I have, not granular, but we have for like a hundred and fifty bucks, I have some liquid stuff that we can mix in a sprayer on the back of our hundred and fifty gallon sprayer that we will spray in the parks for Fun Fest and Music in the Park on those particular, on those particular weeks.
So when you spray, just because Little League has been a topic, when you go down the hill by the old bus, I would go through the, you just drive the road, right? Like might, it might not want to get all the way down to the fields?
So when we, down there, what we do is, so we actually, what we do is we take the bike trail. So we'll get off Hardy Street, we'll, we'll spray Hardy Street and then we'll actually get on the bike, get off the bike trail by Quick Trip there. Or get, sorry, get on the bike trail by Quick Trip. And then we'll drive the bike trail all the way up to the park. We actually keep driving the bike trail until they get to the far end of Tarrant. And then we can get off into our park and then we come back through and just make a couple waves through our park. As well as we go all the way out to our wellhouse, which is past the park there. And we go around our wellhouse out there. And we can, we actually own the snowlot there. When you get past the snowlot there, the field road that we own, that we can drive all the way back in there and do a little spraying. You know, and just, you know, what, what we're trying to do at, at that time is play the wind and push it into, into the woods or the swamp. But no, we can't get on the backside of the ball field, right? There is no way for us to get back there. So basically, the best we can do is kind of maybe have, it's, it's twofold, right? So you want the wind, you want the wind blowing that way when you're going up the bike trail. But then when we're down by number four well, we want the wind kind of blowing back towards the city to get, to get this part of the swamp. So, you know, it's, it's just, we just try to play the wind and, and drive slow and let it kind of fog out over there. And then we drive up and down all the streets. We do try to get as close into any ravines and any wooded areas that we can get. You know, kind of like, for example, up at Caddy, we'll drive all the way down the backside of Caddy and up on, you know, as, as best we can, drive up the Water Tower Road. Try to get it spread out over the woods up in there, just to get the kills as best we can, so.
And one other thing that comes into a spray too, is that we have certain people in town that we have to report that we're going to spray. And there's some businesses, because of their ventilation and, and things like that, we, we have to inform. And how many hours in advance? I don't know if you have to twelve hours.
Tomorrow morning.
Twelve hours.
We'll have it on Facebook tomorrow morning.
And they're on the list and we call them and they, they know that we're, we're doing it, so.
So potentially if they stay bad all summer, we're gonna be short for the last, for like losing the Chipmunks without coming back and getting more money? I don't understand that correctly.
We, we'd have to figure out, we're a thousand bucks.
I have to, you'd have to figure out where to give me another grant.
Another grant, so.
So I just, I have spray right now. I, I just ordered another batch today for around twenty-five hundred bucks, so. I got fifteen hundred left in, in the budget.
So the plan would be tomorrow and then?
For tomorrow, plan will be tomorrow night and then we won't spray again until the week before Fun Fest.
Weather permitting.
Weather permitting.
And, and need.
So we'll look at that week, you know, Monday morning, essentially I'll look at that week. Weather permitting, you know, we might have to spray Tuesday night or, we try to get it as close. Wednesday, Thursday is, is a goal. Obviously we can't spray Friday night. You know, we try to do a Thursday night, closest we can get to it, but that's gotta be weather per, weather permitting. If they're preaching rain, we'll have to go Wednesday night or even Tuesday night.
Matt, do they still make those, their cat things that they used to pitch you to the swamp and stuff?
Yep, they are, my four thousand dollar budget, we'll do, we'll do the swamp that we used, like we used to do. They're very spending.
Do they help?
Yeah, no, I have no, no data to support that.
Yeah, and we'd have to look at, there's probably some people with a DM that we want to check with a little bit on those. Get, make sure that, I think, yeah, some rules may have changed since those came in last year.
Yeah, we, we ran into some other issue, you know, some of those types of rules. We also ran into someone that's private property and us being on private property and getting hurt and insurance and, and some of that type of stuff too, so. There's always more than just what we see out.
Yeah, sure. Okay, any other questions concerning that? And as I was saying, unless there's some objection, that we're on for a scheduled spray tomorrow night, let's see what we can do and maybe we can knock some of these mosquitoes down. Because at the end of the day, we still live next to bodies of water and, and swampy areas and that's, you know.
As long as, as long as it's full of water and it keeps raining, it's just gonna be bad and not a whole lot we can, we can do about it. You know, not that I'm promoting a drought, it's by any means. We do, we do need it, you know, we need a lot of, a lot of warm, dry weather for a while to get most of that swamp dry and all.
Hey, somebody lives on San, was on Friday, Saturday was already saying, oh, we're running short of, I said, right. Okay, so we'll go ahead, staff will go ahead with the, the spray tomorrow night. Okay, any other questions for Public Works Utilities? Hearing none, let's pay the bills. About upcoming meetings, I believe we said we're gonna be in Public Works. Are we breaking the schedule yet? Or are we still sort of planned out?
I still need that, that base map, so probably be the end of June, I think. Next meeting we'll, we'll schedule one.
Stan's looking forward to safety meeting.
We have a meeting on the fourteenth?
Fourteenth, Public Safety, it looks like, probably, I'll check with Chan at least. Probably five-ish versus five-thirty.
I'm not gonna make that meet.
I'm gonna make it, okay. Alright, I'll, I'll relay it to Stan and see who. Is it that week down or just that night?
That whole week, I, I don't, leaving the eleventh to go do our annual fishing trip up to Canada, so.
The fish are already scared up there.
Last year, Dinger, Dinger blew us away. We had a storm come through and literally knocked down thousands of trees in the area we were in. Of course, there's thousands of trees up there.
Yeah, right.
We, without power for almost a day.
Where do you go, Don?
We go, we just moved north of Fort Francis, just about forty-five minutes, which isn't too far as the Canada, but you don't have to go far.
Oh, what I did? All in part.
This just one?
Yeah, that was all in part too.
Sure, there was something in between your papers.
I don't wanna be responsible. That looks like a baby. Okay, someone like make a motion?
I'll make a motion that. We approve the.
Pay the bills.
Pay the bills.
Okay, second, on the second, we got launched to the second? Roll call, please.
Councilman for West Apple.
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Councilman for Hayden.
Yes.
Councilman for Mainke.
Yes.
Councilman for Weizenbeck.
Yes.
All five with favor.
Three two, bar charts are approved. As we said, any other future agenda items? And again, as I said, where it looks like perhaps committee meetings coming up and we'll get those scheduled. Otherwise, motion to adjourn? We have a motion second to adjourn, all's in favor say aye. Most say no. We are adjourned.